Field trip to Six Flags in Springfield. And I don't see Erin, so.
She's on.
She's online. Oh, I'm sorry, Erin. Thank you. So she'll explain that.
Next, where is that going to be?
And that will become 10.1. So all of the action items after that will just bump up. So 10.1 becomes 10.2 and so on. So our action items actually add with 10.12. I would like to start the meeting by introducing Ryan Wilbur, who is, this is his first official membership to the meeting of the board. Brian shares with me that he was born in Range, Range Lakes. He's a full-timer and that he has four children currently in the school district. So I'm sure you're going to bring a wonderful perspective to our work, Brian. We appreciate your willingness to serve on the board. We currently have two other members who have children in the district and one member who has a grandchild in the district. So it's an important perspective on the boards for all of us. Having said that, can I have a motion for an approval of the minutes of the
So move.
So move Danielle, who's second.
Second, I guess.
Chris is second. Any edits or adjustments or mistakes? I can't, I wasn't here, so.
Come on, Dad.
Oh, yeah, of course.
I didn't find any, I didn't find anything.
Our editor in chief. All right. Okay, so having seen.
Last time was rough, all right.
There you go, bro. Having seen none, all those in favor. Okay, passed unanimously. We'll be moving into public comment. Is there anyone online?
Uh, nobody commenting who's online.
Okay, all right. With that having said, we'll move to Georgia's presentation on the budget. This coming year, the 2024-2025 school budget.
Excellent.
Thank you. And it's going to be up here, so you may want to turn your chairs around so you can better see it. Okay.
So as with any budget, our budget is reflective. Everything we do here is reflective of our mission and our vision. Down further, our vision, our mission and our vision. We spent a great deal of time creating, probably five or six years ago. There was a lot of community involvement, staff, students. We still stand behind this today. Our instructional areas, including the budget, are the, as you can read, our CTE programs, our ELA programs, our health and physical education app, language, science, technology, social studies, and our visual performing arts, which we are always super proud of, as our visual and performing arts were very strong in. Goals for this budget are to maintain excellence in programming. As always, to maintain high-quality services for our students. Our, we have a great team of support staff in our building. We're lucky to have this team that's made up of our full-time nurse, our full-time social worker, we have a therapist, as you all know. And, you know, there are a lot of schools out there that currently don't have that, that level of student support. So we're very, very lucky to have that. We also want to maintain facilities, our facilities maintenance upgrades as needed. And, you know, you just never know when those are going to happen. Align staffing needs with the needs of students to ensure safety and academic improvement. And to improve, to always improve our environment, to make it more conducive to learning. To ensure goals are aligned with our vision and mission. Article one. So this is regular instruction. It, you can see the increase is 32, close to 33,000. It, you know, was impacted due to salaries and benefits. And that's going to be something that you're going to hear a lot through each of the articles. Most of our budget increases are due to salaries and benefits. Anticipated increases in teacher supplies, shipping costs, and copier usage. I think when you look through the budget itself, you'll see that in, in the line items under instruction. You'll see those increases there. And we will have, we will have a decrease in teacher salaries for summer curriculum work for this summer paid by S R three monies, totally approximately $24,000. In article two, which is special education, that's always a very tricky, you know, place for us to budget. We just never know what the needs are going to be coming in. This year, the increase is around $63,500. And one of the things that we are seeing increases in are contracted services, which are power, psychological services. And those services are, are, you know, evaluation, people that come in to do our evaluations for special education, any B C B A, functional behavior assessment, you know, things that have to happen, those people are, you know, cost money. And our O T and speech are actually more expensive for us than for, you know, larger districts that are more, you know, southern, southerly located because they are virtual and they actually require two people to deliver them. One aide that has to be with the student and the person that we're paying to actually do the service. So it's much more expensive for us to bring those, those in. Article four, other instruction. The biggest increases here are in dues and fees. And, you know, dues and fees are really those fees for field trips, fees for chorus and drama, and athletic fees. Article five, student staff support. This is really just increases in salaries and benefits to this article. So that's pretty, pretty cut and dry. Article six, system administration. So this is board and central office. You're actually going to see a decrease in our board contingency fund by about $10,000. Includes estimate increases to salaries and benefits. And one law that is coming into play that we now have to budget for is the addition of the main family-paid medical leave, which requires us to budget for one-half percent of our, all of our gross salaries, so forth. And that will come into play starting January 1 of 2025. Article seven, school administration. This is front office. And this is just, you know, salaries and increases. Okay, article eight, transportation. One of the new things for us this year, we are adding a new bus to our fleet. And so that lease now is reflected in the budget. And maintenance and repair costs to our buses are becoming more and more expensive. So we'll see that as a, you know.
That's a lease purchase.
Yes, it, yeah, yeah.
So we'll zero it.
Article nine, facilities and maintenance. Again, you know, increases to energy costs, maintenance and repairs. We do have a long-term plan in place to, over time, to replace our desks in classrooms. Our middle school and high school look pretty good right now. Our elementary is in need of some new desks. So every year, we're replacing more and more of those. Factors to consider. So our S R three grant funds, these are our COVID funds that have been in place. They will offer some relief to this budget as well, just over the summer. This grant dries up the end of September. And we have not applied any of our asset funds, our federal funds, which are our Title I funds. We are a Title I school. Title II, which is primarily professional development. Title IV, which is technology, small rural schools. And our I D E A, local entitlement funds, which are special education grant funds. None of these have been applied towards this budget at this point in time because we don't know how much we're going to be getting. So this is just a visual of the budget breakdown percentage-wise. And if you, if you, if you look at this year's in comparison to last year's, they're very similar. One thing that I did do differently, though, this year was I took, I took technology out and made it its own thing in this pie chart. But it actually is part of article five, which is part of the student supports. And then these are just the comparisons over time for each of the articles. So one thing that we would, we want to see is, you know, we want to see that very slight incline from year to year. And that kind of, that how, this kind of gets like, how we want it to trend. This is the change in time for our local allocations that need to be raised. And so basically, these are, these will change based on student enrollment. And it's our October 1 student enrollment. So you'll see if, you know, there are increases to any of the towns that it's due to enrollment either going up or going down.
It's interesting, Range Lakes lost students, Dallas has gained students. Range Lake Plantation has lost a little bit, and Sandy River.
On the fence when kids graduate and families.
So this slide actually, right, right here actually speaks to each of the counts. So overall, we're up four and a half students.
What's our total population now?
Um, our, uh, it's right around 200.
Right around 200?
Yeah.
107, 28. For the highway, the highway is.
Well, because we had a big family move in the first year.
Oh, move out from the district. Well, we were 182.
Maybe 17.
In October.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see that.
182, 185.
182, 185, okay.
We can look right now and see what our current enrollment is.
Yeah, I see.
Thank you, China.
Okay, Seth's going to look that up. And then, so our EPS funding formula for year 2024 established a mill rate of 6.62. It's down from 6.97 last year, which is good news based on the average state valuation. And based on our mill rate, the state's estimates that this district can afford a $7,242,000 budget. This is why the district is a minimum receiver for federal funding. The overall increase to the 2520, 2425 expenditure budget over the current budget is 4.57%. A total of $5,718,140.80 with an increase of $249,874.53. So local allocations based on town revenues are at 3.61% increase. This is down 2.65 over the last course half.
Yeah, and it should be noted that you're going to see Sandy River and Dallas are going to have a much larger budget this year, but they've increased students.
Say that again, Chris, I'm sorry.
Well, Sandy River last year's budget was 183.
Yeah.
This year, it's 251,000, so it's an increase of about $68,000. And that's because they've also added from seven students to nine and a half. And then Dallas Plantation's going from 14 and a half to 22 students. So they're seeing an increase of about $202,000. As opposed to Range Lee, which is going to see a drop of
A drop, yeah.
$24,000 and
The plantation.
Range Plantation, $24,000. And then Range Lee proper will see about drop of about $76,000. So I know some towns will be like, oh geez, the budget went up. Well, it didn't, you're, and that's what I think is an important message to get through to the assessors on that they're, you know.
Support students.
Yeah, and if you look at, if you look at the CPI, I pulled the CPI from January 2023 to January 2024. And that was 3.06% increase in CPI. So for us at 3.60 with two contracts completed for wage adjustments, I think we've done very well.
Absolutely, because I was just thinking as we were talking about that, Chris, we settled the support staff contract this year that will impact next year's budget. And we'll be in the second year of the, of the T-shirt contract.
Correct.
Yeah.
But at least we, you know, and as you know, a large share of our budget is labor.
Is labor, absolutely.
So, so it's, contract, contract years have a material effect on.
It will affect, yeah. Plus this year, we, you know, with the drop of federal funding, coupled with a new contract, it's an amazing thing as you're coming in, in 3% range.
Yeah, we're seeing other districts which are in double digits and
Oh, yeah.
Double, double digits.
Well, and.
Heard some districts over 20%, so I mean, increase in their budget. So I think we're fortunate that we've been able to, with everything else that's gone up, to track where we're tracking.
Well, not at a personal level. I'd like to say we're also fortunate that we had you as chair of the finance committee because you've done an excellent job over your tenure, keeping the budget in line and asking great questions. And it's a great team, but your leadership has, and Georgia's expertise has really led to us having reasonable budgets, and we appreciate that.
Well, I think, I think it's been a team effort, especially from the administration, Roxanne, Georgia.
Oh, yeah, Roxanne plays a big role.
Making sure that when all this federal money came in, which there was huge amounts that came in, in all different shape and forms in our community. In the, in the school district, it was the S R funds. And many districts chose to fund new positions and new things there. We were careful, we had to create a couple of positions because of COVID guidelines and stuff, but we created those on a temporary basis. So we didn't pigeonhole ourselves like some of these other districts are now seeing, where they spent it on position creations that they now have to fund through taxation rather than government funding. And that's why they're seeing double-digit increases. And we're only seeing 3.607 because our team said, we will try to get creative and work within our bounds. And let's take some of the S R money and buy, I think our best example is that white,
White bus.
White bus out there, and I think it's well utilized and it's, has actually saved us costs because we've, we've done those things. And we're in town and our fleet allowed us to push out an extra year on, on that. So we only have to have, right now, one budget, one bus a year in our budget rather than some districts with two or three. And, you know, I, I think, I think it's a challenge for a lot of districts across the state to forecast out three or four years in the future. And I think it's tough for anybody to do that, but I think we've done it well with our team here to say, all right, we've got contracts coming, we've got this, we've got that. Let's, let's keep our powder a little bit dry and work with what we had. And we're now reaping the rewards of that, and I hope the citizens understand it. You know, we had a 86% approval rate last year on our budget, and I'm hoping we will do some.
Even higher this year.
So, yeah, we also did with this money was this project set. Needed to have that completed with, like, the expansion of our science, middle school science classroom. We finished our outdoor classroom. We funded some of our outdoor classrooms with this.
And for Y five.
And we also really beefed up our technology.
Technology, yeah.
We made some investments in those. You know, those are the hardcore investments that can pay off the, you know, those hard costs. And allowed us to, I mean, just, just the upgrade to the furnace system, that was $100,000. We were able to do that with the S R money.
Yeah.
Which we never would have been able to fund that otherwise.
Again, thanks, Chris. We appreciate your leadership. Okay, moving on to item seven. I don't have any additional comments to make this evening. So I'll turn it over to Georgia, if you have some things to share.
I have a few. Talking about grants, grants. So last month, I mentioned that we had applied for a literacy grant. And we were approved for approximately $11,800.
That's great.
And this grant is going to cover the cost of a very intensive 30-hour foundational literacy training for eight of our elementary teachers. So by the time that they're done with this training, this 30 hours of training over the summer, they'll be considered highly qualified reading teachers.
Well, they'll have to come back to the board and share their experience with us in the fall.
Yeah, that's great. And they're looking very, they're very much looking forward to it. We also applied for a McKinney-Bento grant through the state for $750. And as it turns out, our award was doubled. So that really never happens, but in this case, it did. And this funding is, it helps to prevent homelessness. And we are still awaiting approval for the summer programming grant. And ongoing conversations with them about language, you know, that they're looking for. So we'll get, we'll get there.
Just as an aside, Georgia, do we actually have a homeless problem in our community?
We do not. And, and some, like, some of this funding, for example, might, like, help a family who may need help with fixing their vehicle because they can't get their child back and forth to school. Or it might be, you know, preventing them from leaving their home because they, they have a water pump go or something like that. You know, I mean, those are some of the things that.
So it's just a fund you have available that you could help in emergency situations?
Groceries if families are in need of.
Those types of issues.
Groceries if they're, you know, if we'll help with that. Doctor's appointments, if somebody needed help with a doctor's appointment or an eye appointment, if I could be used for that.
Great, thank you. That's all I got? Great, I appreciate that. So.
Yes, I have some stuff of students today. Yeah, I think there might be a couple of things that they're, I'll try to, like, remember those things.
That would be helpful.
I'm sure they were going to share about the amazing talent show this weekend. I heard that was a big hit. And then, gosh, what was on Saturday? Oh, there was a dodgeball tournament. It was a lot of fun. I guess there was like nine or 10 teams maybe. They made a decent amount of money. Here we have to have a staff team next year.
You're in charge.
I was out of town because we had a plan for 14.
That was good. Gosh, I'm reeling here. What they would have shared, because I didn't write them.
There's a craft fair coming up.
Craft fair coming up. I'll think as I go, but. Grants, so Miriam, Mami, and Darlene, we, so, like, two years ago, we did the project. Out of that came a lot of ideas about gardening and composting. So Miriam and Darlene would have decided to start writing grants. And they're just not stopping, and they keep winning. So we just got, so we had, I think, around 15,000 that had been awarded for our greenhouse and our composting. And so Miriam's like, oh, the Molly Grant's, the main outdoor leadership initiative grant came up. So we applied for that. We got another $25,000. Trent, like, $40,000 they've earned for our greenhouse. So our greenhouse will be three-season at least. Just lots of plans for that. There's stipends in there. I don't know what their idea is to start heating it.
We got 40 grand.
They have ideas.
They have ideas.
You want to hear it, you can come talk to them.
Yeah, it's going to be quite a greenhouse.
They're going to staff it over the summer if they're starting planting.
Well, see, so I would let them speak to that. This thing is growing. There's money in there. One of the grants they got was for stipends to pay people because the other thing is happening. So if we're going to take our greenhouse to this level, you know, and it's going to be, we already have a gardening program for the elementary kids with Laura Hoff comes in and ties it into the curriculum, but there is money in these grants to pay someone because it is quite a job if you're going to, you can have a greenhouse to start plants to go and garden. Or you can have a greenhouse that's an instructional area. And then you need, you have people that their job is like a garden for you. They go into classrooms and they tie it in the curriculum. So some of the money is there for that. I'm not sure the plans for the summer, or I thought we were going to probably start doing the rocks sooner and then we've got more snow. But it's really funny, like, Miriam, they have a geodesic dome in Stratton. And Miriam and I, like, finally said uncle to each other, she should go see their geodesic dome. And she was like, she thought I wanted it, and then I thought she wanted it. So finally, she's writing this grant, like, Miriam, I don't think we're ready for that. She's like, thank God. Because we could have wrote this grant for like $150,000. I don't know what we could have tried for, but anyways, thumbs up to them of just being so driven and just every little scrap of money they hear about, they're going after. So it's going to be pretty cool. And it's going to go out, it's going to be a hoop house to start.
It isn't one of their attempts to feed some of that produce into the school program?
Yeah, and maybe we hope that it can fund itself too, or, you know, selling some produce, having, what do they call it?
Depends on the crop, doesn't it?
Take that, Bob.
Certain crops can't be grown. Moving on.
Tomatoes are, not putting that out.
We're talking heirloom tomatoes and pumpkin.
We're not talking, greenhouse, greenhouse, go green. We had three students get selected into the Technical School National Arts Society at Washington State. And Kelly Cheverry-Woodward, Ava Folling, and Lily Schaper. Congratulations to them. The last key Tuesday is next Tuesday. There was some confusion about that. There were some parents who sent out an email today. The last one is next week. They wanted to get eight in, so we kind of scheduled the 10 weeks of it. And we are going to get those eight. Looks like the weather's going to, the pattern's holding good, so that's been good. So art awards, as always, our kids do outstanding in art. So the 2024 Classic Art Awards, this past week, five panels of jurors reviewed is judged over 1,100 works of art in portfolios in the Maine region's classic art awards competition. The level of Maine's student artworks surpassed our expectations. Jurors were faced with a challenging task. The National Classic Arts Awards Program has strict rules on how many awards can be given. Only one-third of the entries receive awards. Many more of your works are rare recognition, and you all deserve praise at the honor of seeing those classic students work across the country and recognize how Maine's teams are exceptionally creative and talented. So Range Lake Regional School, its classic art honorable mentions, Dylan Butler, Sylvia Mami-Gryffendor, Gracie Feeny, Gracie Feeny, Natalie Stokes, Shirley Trulyn, Alexis Foley, Anna Rose Ross, Eric White, all got honorable mentions. Its classic silver keys, Sylvia Mami-Gryffendor got two. Ava Folling got one, Anna Ross got two for photography. Alden Stoller, Sutherland got one, and Shirley Trulyn got a silver key. Gold keys, Sylvie got two. Ross got one, now Hathaway got one. Sylvia's an eighth grader. And then.
She also won a National Geographic company.
Yes, and then five of our students work. Okay, we're just doing lots of stuff. It's my pleasure to tell you that your work was selected by jury of professional artists to be displayed in the Cross Office Building at the Capitol Complex. There's 45 pieces shown there. We have five of them. One from Shirley Trulyn, Alex Hathaway, Anna Rose Ross, Alden Stoller, and Sylvia Mami-Gryffendor all have works going to the Capitol.
That's happened several years.
Yes, I think I got all of this. And it is nice if you can travel to Mecca for the ceremony just to look at the level of work done around the state in art, and it's a nice little ceremony. Yeah.
There's a few pieces up in the high school wing.
Yeah, actually, yes, when you walk downstairs, you can see some of the, like, Sylvie's gold key. It's her dad's workbench, upper right corner.
Shirley's there.
Shirley's gold key is down there. Alex's, they're, I think, all of the work.
And Alex's, yeah.
I don't know who's, I mean, it goes with the ritual, but it's amazing.
And I think if board members, if board members want to take the time to send a personal note, I think that's always such a wonderful. I think that's always such a wonderful thing. Because I know I run into students at the grocery store, and if they've done something I mentioned, and they seem to just beam from ear to ear, so it affects the kids, and they know about these awards. It can say something that's terrific.
And, you know, it is a passing on, the ending of a one art teacher's legacy into another one. And I think one of the things, what she strikes me as when I've known her for, I've worked here, is like, when I took art in school, like, if you didn't know how to do art, you just didn't do art. Like, I could draw a stick figure. Sonia gets kids that aren't artists to do art. And one of the topics in conversation right now is our eighth grade boys' work over here. Now, when they came in, they would have told you they can't draw a stick figure, some of them. And you look at what they're doing, and it's just, it just shows, like, her whole thing is everyone's an artist, it's just hard work. So, yeah.
Can I just take you guys over to the. Miriam is doing a ton of good work with that also.
Oh, yes.
Just so you know.
With graphics.
Her and Sonia are working together on some really cool stuff.
Everything technology.
Thank you so much. And I lied, I really do have something to share there. Chief French, you know, has retired. And he had a tremendous impact in this building. Not only was he here in the morning when the school's children came into the building, you know, as a preventative measure before lockdown, he was here in the evening when, when students exited the building. He came up, he ate lunch with kids, he had just wonderful relationships. And I think the board should do something to honor his commitment to the school community. And I'm not sure, we, Georgia and I have talked very briefly about it. I'm not sure what that might look like, but I'd appreciate it if you'd send, shoot an email off to Georgia or myself, or if you have ideas and suggestions of how we might recognize him, whether it's at graduation or it's in some other kind of way. We'd love your, your ideas and thoughts, and, and maybe we could talk about that at the next board meeting. So be thinking about that, but I think we really should honor him in some way because it was way above and beyond what he needed to do to me. Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Start with policy. Kathy, welcome. I know you've had a long haul in the department in the back, and I hope Ben's his eye is okay.
I'll talk to you later. He says he's never seen this in a person his age. Only young people get it.
It's usually the opposite of what you hear.
Yeah, I know.
Only old people get this.
Anyway, we had a meeting on March fourth. We accomplished a lot. We're still on good track for our, you know, keeping up with the, with the dates and everything. And our next meeting is going to be Monday, April first.
April first?
And I ain't cool.
April one at two thirty, Kathy, three o'clock, three o'clock.
Unless anybody wants to change it, but it's good, three o'clock.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I know you have some action items coming up. And I'm pleased to see you because I was trying to get caught up very quickly since I hadn't been able to be at that meeting. Finance committee, Chris.
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting today, went over any notes and comments that came in from board members for, in reference to the budget. Went over the public version of the budget, which George just presented. And we're gonna vote on getting that out so that the public can get out there and look at it. We'll have our hearing that we always do on the fourth of June. And then the vote will be on the eleventh of June, and then we will sign the warrants on the twelfth, if the budget passes, which hopefully it does.
So just a heads up that our, our June school meeting will not be on a Tuesday. It'll be on the Wednesday, the twelfth, so that we can sign the warrants. So you might want to just make a note of that because it's a little bit of a deviation from our regular schedule. Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on to Danielle and facilities.
Okay, so the fuel tank update, that is looking to be, well, right now, there's no issues, and they're looking for install in April or the end of June. Vortex came out to look at our lines that we've had previous issues with, and they've cleared out. They gave us an estimate to basically work on them, and it was fifty thousand dollars. Right now, we've decided to be preventative and just pretty much flush them, maybe twice a year, until it either becomes a problem or we have other large things happening at that time that it financially makes sense. Oh, we also are looking at getting a new dishwasher and oven. We got two separate quotes. And we are looking at another quote from maybe Cisco. And that needs to be installed in April or June, or during April break, I guess.
And that's about it. Any questions or comments for Danielle?
I just thought we should probably clarify, Danielle, with the piping, the quote that Vortex gave us was to coat the whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, and for fifty thousand, and right now, we're not at a point there. We just, we're flushing a couple times a year. Once in a while, there's a small part that they want to get over those. I know, Ryan, you have a lot of expertise in this area, so maybe you can, I know you had a conflict today because you had your, what, Zoom meeting, right? At the same time as facilities, but he's got quite a bit of knowledge here. He's my co-2 guy.
So Ryan, you're gonna be on the facilities. Ryan, you're gonna be on the facilities committee then? Oh, terrific. That'll be great.
He can, he can provide some insight on that because it's, yeah, so we, we're just gonna keep flushing.
Okay. All right, question. Bob, negotiations, is there anything you reported at this point, or are we a done deal?
So the contract has been ratified by the support staff after a lengthy process. At the present time, Georgia and I are kind of exercising due diligence and sifting through the printed versions of the contract to make sure there's no typos or stylistic issues. So I've almost completed my review, which is why I was late. Sorry I was late today, but it looks to me like we're in a good place. I do want to, I like to stay ahead of things. And I would like to point out that there are a couple of pieces of legislation that are gonna be kind of asked down the pipe. One is L D nine seventy-four, the other is L D nine fifty-five, I believe, which have to do with governance directives from the legislature involving minimum salaries and minimum wages for support staff and teachers. So that stated, the nine seventy-four, which affects the support staff, is passed committee and is going to vote by the legislature. That's what's coming up. It's a lengthy process, which it should be, and there'll be a lot of debate on it. And we will have to wait and see what the cumulative effects will be if this legislation passes. That stated, our negotiations committee is gonna try as best we can to stay ahead of this, and we're gonna run a couple of models and see how this will affect the numbers in the teacher and support staff contracts should these pieces of legislation be approved by the government at May. So that's really all I have to report. Be keeping a very close eye on this. It's a fascinating coming book on radar, and we'll see where we want to go.
Thanks, Bob, for mentioning nine seventy-four. Everybody should actually have a copy of that in front of them. If they don't, Brian here. Georgia shared that with us today, and the, as, as you can see, if you look down through the figures, that, you know, it blows the scale that we just agreed. It blows the scale that we just agreed to right out of the water.
Wow, so there are provisions in, in all the contracts that we have with our teachers and with our support staff that allow for these types of situations to happen. And certain areas of the contracts can and will be reopened to deal with these types of things. It's happened before, it will happen again, and we have these safeguards built into it, and we'll, we'll work through it. I'd ask a clarifying question.
Could I just make one comment, Chris, and then you can, please feel free to ask one. Georgia recommended that we, as board members, might want to contact our reps to talk to them about the impact that this potentially would have on the district. And Lisa Tim is, is, represents us in the senate, and Mike Silvestri.
Silvestri from Phillip, Silvestri.
Lisa Kime and Mike.
Yes, and so just know that that's the encouragement of these by the administration here. Bob, or Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a question with these models that we're running. I assume we're doing this without legal capital, it's interior staff running of these models?
Yeah.
Because until it becomes a lie, it's really not worth it.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's strictly internal.
It's just a homework assignment. I mean, we've settled the contract.
It'd be great to know because I think we've, we've already talked about that is we finish the audit, and sometimes we have some funds that are undesigned that we could set aside a reserve to prepare if it looks like the road is heading in that direction.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we've been put on notice that we need, we need not relax at this point. So you're, you're absolutely right.
I appreciate the proactivity of that.
You are.
Great.
Yeah, thank you so much for leadership with that. Okay, moving on then. Do we have, item nine, do we have appointments, resignations and/or nominations?
I do have some this time around. So I, let's start with appointments. I'm appointing Seth Peliberty as our middle school baseball coach. We don't know him.
Boy, we were, we're in that much trouble, huh? I was gonna say, you looked around the room, you had a, you had a coming coach, and nobody showed up.
It's a package deal.
It's a package deal. Ten, ten week old son, you know, I'm still gonna help out, but.
Well, congratulations.
Seth's been there for a while, does baseball well.
I'm also appointing Vijay Kennan as middle school softball coach.
Okay.
And Adam Barney for Boys Varsity Soccer.
So great, nice. I don't, do you know anything about Mr. Barney?
Well, I do.
I do. He was my assistant coach last year. He works at Builder's Supply. He's a younger guy, he played soccer.
Oh, Adam.
Yeah, he's amazing. The kids loved him as my assistant coach. I told him I'll stick around as assistant coach next year. Transition myself right on out of there.
I worked with him, I worked with Builder's Supply, he's awesome.
He's a great guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's maybe a rhetorical question, but I assume everybody of these would use a, well, if that's a safe sport certified.
They would, oh, they have to.
Okay.
Okay, and so nominations. So I am very happy to nominate Elizabeth Thompson as our six through twelve art teacher. Seth, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so, yeah, Elizabeth, she graduated from U S M with a minor arts degree. She kind of took my path, where she took all of the education courses but didn't do student teaching. So then you teach for a year under conditional and get your professional certificate. People do that for a variety of reasons. But, yeah, it was really neat. So Liz was not the first class with Sonia, but started very young with Sonia as her art teacher. And Liz is an artist still, she's a graphics artist, she's very designer oriented. And then she took graphics from Miriam. When Miriam started teaching graphics, and it kind of led her path to where she was as an artist. So, yeah, it was really nice. Yeah, she's very excited. You know, where she could take it, I think, you know, she's excited to just keep it going for now, and then see where, you know, her will take it. And I tried to do something, you know, we had a speaker, I guess, two years ago, Joe Sampliwo. What they do at their school is they have different ways to, like, let people know they have their jobs. So I had this idea, so I kind of said, Liz, you gotta meet me in my office, and I had Sonia and Miriam in there. And she went in, and like, kind of, they told her she had a job, and they were all sort of excited. So it's really nice. It's like she is a product of our art program. That's coming back.
That's great.
And she's done a great job with elementary art this year, yeah.
She's very talented.
She's pretty witty.
Yeah, she's pretty witty. She answered one question, I was like, no one's ever said that before. That was good, that was really good, yeah.
So I'll give a nomination then to, okay, a second. Danielle, any more discussion? All of us in favor of nominating Liz? Okay, terrific. Give it yours.
And I'm sad, I have one resignation.
Happy sad, bitch.
Yeah, happy sad. So Simone Martin, who is our middle school English teacher, is resigned. And I'll let you know.
So I, I usually see these coming, I didn't see this one. So I'm ready to inform you that I'm resigning from my middle school English teaching position at Rangeley Trivial School. My last day will fall in the last calendar day of the twenty-three, twenty-four schedule. And I asked her, she told me to just read this letter. My husband and I are looking to purchase a home and start a family. Because of Rangeley's unique location, my husband and I feel it is too difficult for us to settle down here. We'll be moving closer to the hospital where he works so we can meet our goals more successfully. Please note, this decision was not made lightly. Our L R S has been a wonderful work environment. I cannot thank you enough for your support throughout my first two years. I would like to help support the next teacher who will be stepping in my place. Should be needed, I am willing to attend summer meetings and hand over my resources. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help Simone Martin. This is hard, she, you know, she's really, she was good for the team. That team, I'm bummed, but I also understand completely. She was funny, she goes, you know, I, I took the job when I was twenty-one, and you weren't really thinking about all these things, and like, your kids, and, you know, your husband's work, and, yeah. She was really fitting in. She was like a silent, you know, she just did it, and the kids really liked her, so, yeah. But I wish her luck, and I understand completely. It's not an easy place to be.
You have to make decisions that are likely to be a failure.
Didn't see it coming, I usually see them, I was like, ooh, no. Thank you for everything she does for us.
Yeah, yeah, she is.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna move on then to the action items. And our first action item is a request for an overnight trip to Six Flags in Springfield from May the thirtieth through June the first. And Aaron, I believe you have been in the paperwork, and you want to share with us a little bit about the trip. Are you in your car?
I am, and I'm being completely blinded right now, holy moly. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Um, so my course this year wasn't going to go on the trip because we just did it last year, and we kind of want to do an every other year thing. But turns out we're pretty good, so we kind of want to go again this year because last year we won first place. And we want to try to get on a every other year rotation with opposite Kate because Kate has her Puerto Rico or Costa Rica trip. And right now, we're on the same every other, so we're hoping that if we go this year, then Kate can do her thing next year, and then we can get on a good every other schedule so we're not overtaxing people with fundraising stuff. It's the same trip that we've taken, I think I've done it ten or twelve times now. We have almost all the money in the choir account currently. We need to raise maybe another thousand, fifteen hundred, which is not that much. We have some money in my music budget for transportation, so that should cover the bus or the white, the white bus. Which I have fifteen kids, so if one kid has to drive with a parent to fit, we might have to do that. What else do you need to know? If you don't know, the, the festival is, it's really fun. The kids get to perform two pieces for judges, there's two judges. They get to sing two kind of contrasting pieces, and they get feedback from the judges who are talking into a recorder the entire time they're singing, so they get, and we get that pretty quickly. It's usually the same day that we get those, those comments back, and the kids get to hear what the judges are thinking about it while they can hear themselves singing, so that's kind of cool. They get their written scores pretty, as, as soon as we are done performing. So we know how we score, but we don't know what that means until the awards ceremony, which is later that day at the picnic pavilion at Six Flags. And last year, we went on the hottest day of the planet, and it was absolute torture row, right? But it was still fun, and the kids still had a really good time, and.
Anything?
Yes, Chris.
Anything deviate from years past? Pretty much the same, same thing, right?
It is exactly the same trip. I haven't booked a hotel yet because I didn't want to put it on my personal credit card, so I was waiting until the trip was approved before booking. so I was waiting until the trip was approved before booking. So the rooms could be anywhere between like 150 and 200. So I think the sooner I can book them, the sooner, the less of an amount they will be. But otherwise, same trip.
Move to.
Okay, so second, are there any other questions or discussion? So Aaron, are you gonna bring this group in to sing for us?
They absolutely can, they sang at the talent show on Friday. And we sang two songs from like the 60s, 70s, it was groovy. They did a great job.
What's your concerns? All those in favor? Well, we got a unanimous vote here and...
Thank you, I'm gonna get out of my car now.
Okay. All right, moving on then to our next is the approval of the 24-25 RLS program study.
Did this get marked up with the changes on it?
Yeah. And I'm not sure who I turn this over to, am I turning that over to you Seth or am I turning it over to Georgia?
Oh, yes, there wasn't much changed in it, Ro added...
Can you point out what changes have been made, please?
They're all highlighted.
They're all highlighted, there's some math.
Oh, yeah, I know they're highlighted, I just wanted to speak to them.
Oh, yeah, Ro added applied algebra to, you know, meet some needs of our students who may not be, you know, worrying about college or where you're college. They sort of have a map that applies. Precalc to some prerequisite language change. Yeah, I think math language is mostly just about some prerequisites, other than that, I think.
Physics, there's a change there a bit?
Yeah, just that's, just reworded some prerequisite language. It's pretty straightforward. Miriam added advanced place of research, it just kind of goes along. We've had, we implemented the seminar, a seminar this year and it's like the second year of that seminar. And I think it sounds pretty amazing for the kids to have that.
Seth, can I ask a question about that? What, what is the pass rate for these, for this AP course?
We haven't had an AP exam yet, the seminar is the first year we put it.
Okay, okay, so they don't actually take the exam?
No, the seminar kids this year will take an AP exam and then next year.
They haven't done it yet, so you don't have, okay, I'm with you. How many kids are participating in that?
It's like four in that class or three.
There's three in seminar and there's four in recent US, I think.
Yeah, so there'll be, should be three kids taking this.
It'll take an exam. I'd really be interested to hear what the pass rate looks like over that.
It looks really high on it.
Yeah, they are. World Language, she added some, just the language of KJ18. Oh, no, that's, yeah, Kate's about the trip.
That's the trip to Puerto Rico?
Yeah.
Okay. Something with piano, keyboarding?
Yeah, just a piano book they'll use. No changes to help PE. Yearbook, she, it's mostly entirely the same as the above, but we just wanted yearbook to be a class offer. It has been the past, I don't think we've had it in a few years, but we hope to bring that into...
So, so she gives, she gives credit to students who participate in the yearbook? They get a, they get a single credit?
Yeah, yeah, right now they do it like during winter time after school.
Well, last year it was a class.
Yeah, last, we did have last...
Yeah, last year it was a class and the kids worked with Kate.
Okay, this year it's more of an independent activity, but they'll still get a credit for... How many kids end up participating in yearbook?
Well, this year there's no credit being awarded.
No, because it's just co-curricular after school, who can help, yeah. So I don't know how many kids will sign up for it, we hope that it comes into a class because it's better and once the yearbook's done, she does some other stuff because her background's in journalism.
It's a lot of work.
Yes, it's a lot of work, yeah.
I meant experience from the years of classing.
There wasn't much, pretty much the same.
Elevated College and Career Planning.
I think that's just something that hasn't been taken in a while, we're gonna shift, you know, that just is done through all of...
That's that new...
Is that the new program that Heidi is doing?
No, no, well, EBL is, it's like, we're moving, this was, all this stuff, a lot of this stuff's done during like winter time with Delaney. What Heidi and Delaney is gonna do through EBL is we're gonna bring back like the work, a strong work experience, internships, workplace readiness, yeah, it just no one, it doesn't really apply what we're doing.
Because I know she's doing a pilot that's starting in the middle school, right.
E-dynamic learning.
And it's gonna stay in the middle school here or is it going to the high school?
We're already using it in high school too.
It's in the high school.
Yeah, oh, you might not have been here for a presentation, but yeah, we're already using it in high school.
That was last month, you were out.
I was out, oh, she, oh, okay.
Yeah, we had a whole presentation on it.
Oh, good.
So it looks really good, Miriam, and I think it's gonna help move things in a good direction there. There's a lot of different things that, it's like electronic choose your own adventure book. So you get to kind of pick which area you want to go in and you can dive deeper into certain things. And I think it'll complement the work experience rather than just throwing kids out in the business.
Yeah, and one thing...
They can do something that really attracts them.
I know you guys have been concerned that there's just some disenfranchisement on the part of some high school kids and, and so this really feels, feels important.
I think it does, based on what it's offered.
Yeah, okay.
We're hoping, and you know, a lot of schools, it's coming up, like all of a sudden I have some groups where I meet with principals and they're talking about like, jeez, I have this student that wants to be half time, I have this student. And they're all experiencing more and more kids seeking out an alternative pathway. And that's kind of what EBL, work experience, is that pathway for kids that, you know, aren't, don't want to go to...
There is not another pathway that's currently available to them.
And SAT 9 has some extensive multiple options.
Oh, yeah, there is, it's phenomenal.
Because I have, I have a nephew who chose an alternative path but still ended up getting a degree and not going in the military, but it all worked out and it was because it was, okay, you're feeling this, let's pivot and the staff did a good job. So I think this, this is gonna give a little bit more firepower to it. And I'm really glad, I mean, five years ago, this didn't exist. And so there's a lot of work in this that was done.
Well, that's right, she's been representing us.
It always existed, it always existed, but it wasn't coming to the board here.
No, it wasn't.
And that's what I'm trying to do, I missed it by a month, I meant to do it every February. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Appreciate you doing that, Bob.
Thanks, it's a great piece of work. I do have one question for you. In at least two places in this document, it references a course designed to prepare students for college careers and civic life is rigorously aligned to the main learning result standards. Does that have to do with evaluation and/or content or either one of those?
It's the content.
Okay, yeah.
The main results are just the standards set by the state, we review every five years that we should get.
They, they describe the scope of what a particular content area should cover over the course of a grade span.
This is Mary's wheelhouse, actually.
Isn't this your wheelhouse, didn't you do this?
I was a go with it. Remember those State Department days when I was wearing that hat, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
And the last change is just 32, I think the last change is all foster classes are wanted to have credits.
Great. I move to accept as revised.
Do I have a second for that? Okay, any questions, discussions on that? All those in favor? Terrific, thanks Seth, I appreciate that.
Good job.
Okay, moving right on.
Even though it didn't make it for February, we'll forgive you.
All the teachers work.
We're moving on to the calendar, I'm gonna turn that back to Georgia. We have two options that are in our packet.
Well, the first one is, the first discussion called is the April 8 calendar change that were requested by the board. Have been, we've been meeting with Chief Bacon and tried to prepare for the solar eclipse and how the town could potentially be impacted. They are, so right now, because of the timing of the eclipse where it's happening right around dismissal, we feel like an early dismiss, that early dismissal that Monday at 11 o'clock is really the way to go. But it could, but what we would also like to be able to do if need be is, if it comes to the last minute and we, we just don't feel like we can pull a half day off because of, you know, we don't want to pull the trigger too quickly here, excuse the pun, but we, we just don't know how to plan for something like this. And I want to be able to get kids home.
One indicator you can do for sure is, and I mentioned this to Chief Bacon as well because I had a meeting with a group of the town people about this because I felt it was based on, when we had our meeting, I was like, okay, there's some concern and then, and then we had a couple of citizens who were running around with Chicken Little about it. So we had like an impromptu meeting with several people and I think if you get in touch with main turnpike authority and get a read on what's going on for cars impact that day, for a majority of people, it's going to be a day trip. People coming up from Massachusetts, the southern part of the state and head north. And so that's gonna give it a good take, there are some, they're concerned some about the border, but not as much. And just so you do know, there's a 40-second difference between the length of the solstice in Rangel, Maine versus the length of the solstice in Stratton. They're 40 seconds long. So that's how much it can vary the change. I know Salabac is their whole thing that they're doing, which is a whole other piece of it, which Jimmy was at that meeting with that group. But I think based on everything, Chief Bacon's put some good time into this and is dealing with Franklin authorities and they've got everything figured out, even the stupid long light down at Farmington, they're gonna have a officer there. By the Rite Aid and it looks like their estimates is gonna be somewhere between the 3rd of July and concert weekend. And as you know, at concert weekend, there's a ton of people that come in, they do the event and then they exit.
They leave.
And the exit is the biggest thing. So I'm in full support of an early dismissal. And then, just so you can understand for those of you who don't know much about this, most of the housing has been booked of short-term rentals, Rangel Inn is full.
All of it is.
It's pretty close, it's pretty close to capacity. And the Rangel Inn did a package where you had to book for five nights.
Oh.
And they sold it.
They sold.
So there's a lot of people, I think it's an older crowd, that type of thing. But, you know, the one thing we don't forget, that we have to remember too, which is a major impact is, in true Rangel, Maine fashion, we could get an Orista that Sunday of 18 inches of snow and parking is already gonna be at a premium that I would say, I would say my guidance to the staff and administration would be is if there is some kind of a weather event that creates any kind of snowball, that you would probably call it for that day because it's going to be a mess just because of the people that are in town that probably don't even have snow towns.
Actually, what we'd like to do is, and this is just gonna sort of be in our back pocket, we've done some research on this, I've reached out to another superintendent that's doing this right now. If needed, we'd like to call it a remote learning day. Because if there was ever a day where learning could happen, I could make a case for this. Because everybody's gonna be witnessing it, there could be assignments that go home on Friday that kids could be, you know, I think it would be, and really what we have to do is offer lunch and still provide our special, special education services to our students, which we can do very easily. But again, we don't want to make decisions too soon, but we want to be ready for whatever happens. And like you said, Chris, that could be, we still know.
So Georgia, you're requesting then that the board give you approval for
A half-day early release.
Predicated on your judgment, it might be that you don't do that, but you've got that in your back pocket.
We'd like to do the early release on Monday.
Just do it.
Why don't we give them the same powers that we did during COVID and say, it's at your discretion to make the decision amongst your team because it's not seen. And then having to go to pull the board on top of everything else you gotta do. And then my only thing is I want to make sure that there's very clear communication to all parents. And if you decide to call it the night before, that it's very clear. And if we can't have some kind of alternative, because there are parents that both parents work that, you know, for lack of a better thing, we dealt with this in COVID, is nobody else, you know, that they're gonna need to find alternative jobs.
And that's my only concern, I was just early, is notification of parents so that everybody has an opportunity to make plans for that if, if that happens.
Okay, what do you think your biggest notice of overload?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think that we are going to, or at least I hope that we're gonna start feeling and seeing it before, way before Monday. So we can make it, you know, a decision even before the weekend if we have to say Thursday or Friday. Yeah, especially if we have the, all of the, we're being impacted already by an influx of...
The wild tide is the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
And as Chris pointed out, the day trippers that are gonna be watching that weather. And it's really nice weather.
Steve Jobs has the sun icon for Monday, look out.
Look out, Rangel, watch out.
I mean, we just don't, I can't say with any, we're just gonna try to make the best decision that we can around all of the things that we'll have in place.
Do you want to make the option that if parents have the judgment, so they want to plan accordingly? I mean, I'm just saying, I know that that could impact classrooms that day.
I think a period of appearance are pretty significant.
And we're already hearing that a fair number of parents are deciding to just get kids home because they want to, they want to take advantage and view this as a family.
Well, can we, can you make a decision that it doesn't penalize them?
Oh, absolutely, yes. It strikes me that you should just have us, give you permission to have it as half pay.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
And just go for it. And then people know in advance, they're gonna have plenty of time to plan for that. And if you want to add an instructional component to it, do that, but... So you want to motion for us to give you permission for half pay that day?
Yes, and the Tuesday would be a remote day.
Right.
And the whole thing with the remote day, you know, with this year, between what happened in October, you know, the Grinch, rainstorm, and then this, we've had like three instances that were, the weather event was abnormal, Lewiston completely out of our control.
The Lewiston shooting, yeah.
Now this, an eclipse during school, like all these things is there. We call it a remote day, it doesn't pop us to Friday or Monday at the end of the year. And there is some learning that we can get in, but schools are doing remote days and this is a perfect use of one, because this is out of our control.
And we can make...
And I don't think there's any objection on the part of the board, so I have a motion.
Can somebody give a full motion?
Yeah, that's right, I'm asking for a full one.
As a parent, I would rather know that it's a remote learning day now than I would the Friday before.
Absolutely.
So if you think there's a serious chance of doing that, I'd rather both have it a remote day tonight so the parents can get plenty of dollars ahead of that.
I agree with that.
Daycare is a nightmare.
That's, that's a good point.
I mean, you guys openly oppose, I just call.
Well, let's, let's have a motion to that effect, I agree with that.
If that's what you guys want to do, you know, and, and there are, and that's a really good point that you bring up, Brian. But then we hear the other side where it's like, wait a minute, we don't even know what's gonna happen here and you're already calling it. So I just, you know, if you feel...
I think they should have a dance notice.
So hope for the best for people who are worst.
Exactly.
I'd say if you just stipulate that's...
So Georgia, there are some districts already that have, that have called it, already called the day.
This needs to be a remote learning day to some extent.
Yes, yeah.
Right, not just, not just a change.
Right. Oh, no, no, I, I don't like, I don't, I'm not really a proponent of remote snow days. I think snow days should be traditional days because that's what the staff has asked for, that's what the students want, want. But in a situation like this where it's a rare event where you can learn from it, I think that we could make a real case for it.
So can you clarify a little bit more, so remote learning day means people can send their kids to school or we, or is the school facility closed on a remote?
Well, they, they go home early, just like they went on a, but, but they have an assignment, they have, it's closed, it'll be closed.
The building would be closed and we would send home an assignment.
Materials for the kids to do on lunch.
Back lunches and bags, yes. And we would provide lunches, we would send lunches home. We're, we're, we're not sure how that...
Well, I would say...
If you have time to figure that out.
But if, I will, I know how, like right now, if we said today that it was gonna be remote, I would tell my kitchen that we're sending home lunch probably on Friday. Like sign up, we can figure out something and send it home, it can keep, you know, like, that's what I would do.
We have a sense of that. We have a sense of that. Can I have a motion?
Chris, so they're, they're going to have schoolwork. So it's going to be like a school day at, at home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it's, it's, it's going to be around the.
But it's still going to be a half day. So it will be the amount of schoolwork for a half day or?
No, no, no. It's, no, it's not going to be the amount of school for a half day. It will be some learning that will happen, but not four hours worth of work. We're not expecting you guys to keep the kids sitting down for, for, for hours.
Yes.
The element of community.
Did that word traumatize you, Ramon?
Yes, absolutely. I am telling you, I would be ever promoting it.
Bob has a question.
So in this video, I'm not going to ask my high school team to do synchronous, like live Zoom. It's going to be like, here's your assignment, here's your assignment, get it done.
Let's not talk over each other. Okay, guys. Bob, you have a question.
Um, so I agree with the whole opportunity here for learning. And in fact, there are opportunities to uh have a lot of learning building up to this big event. It doesn't happen again until 2079. The opportunities are uh include, but are not limited to science, obviously, and astronomy, but also history. If you start to look at what went on during the eclipses and the Central American continents and states there with the Aztecs and Mayans, there's just a lot, a lot you could, a lot you could get out of this. It's just a lot of opportunity here.
Well, families may want to just be, that activities that are happening in the community. The library is doing something special. I mean, there are a lot of things that are going to be going on. So what do you want, how do you want the motion to be phrased, Georgia?
It will be a remote.
Remote learning day.
Okay. We have a motion.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Do I have a second?
That's how you guys, this, how you, the route you guys want to go, it actually makes it simpler for us.
Well, then, yeah.
As a parent, it makes it simpler for us.
Yeah, I have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
But I, I just, um, the Tuesday is still going to be a 1:30 release, correct?
No, no. So we are going.
Tuesday will be a full day.
Full day. Okay.
So that'll happen.
Because I know we discussed that last time, but.
Well, see, on a Friday, it's all.
Good. It's a good question. It's an important question. Any others that compensate for that? Any other questions or comments about that?
Just clarifying comment.
Yes, Chris.
So Friday will, because the Friday was already scheduled day on. Remote learning on Monday, three full regular days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then Friday will be workshop, it's not a workshop, it's just a vacation day. Okay. But I, I agree with Ryan, this whole, let's just, let's just call it and it's done and then everybody can plan. And actually gives kids opportunities because there's going to be a lot of tourists in town. They can make some cash.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, vote for a vote if everybody's comfortable with that. All those in favor? Okay. I didn't mean to show you. Okay, moving right along. The calendar, Georgia.
Okay, so um, last year you got, while asking to bring two calendars, I did bring two calendars of before start, um, before Labor Day start and an after Labor Day start. The administration and the RTA are recommending a before Labor Day start. And I, one of the major reasons for this from an educational standpoint is the 20, um, the 26th and the 27th of August being workshop days for teachers. It's just perfect. It's just works out perfectly. And then having student days. So what did this, what they like to call a soft start back to school on the 28th and the 29th really helps teachers get through all the logistics and rules and lockers and um, all of those things, you know, that for, for two days. We, the 30th is actually a dissimilar day to our Foster Tech Center. Um, but we have that in place because we are trying to um, support our area businesses over the long weekend being a tourist town. So we do have an extra long weekend that.
Just kids can work.
Yep. Other than that, you know, the, the, the last day obviously gets, you know, moved the later we start. Um, Foster Tech um, will start either for us, and we don't know if we'll go one or two days, if it will be a green or a gold at this point, but Foster Tech starts on the 29th of August. Um, so regardless of what we, we decide, if it's an after day, uh, after Labor Day start, our Foster Tech students would still be starting at the first day of, you know, Foster Tech. So, um.
So you.
Okay. Can I, can I get, can comments or questions, Chris?
I just said it. I just wanted to note for the record that the nicest week of the summer was that week.
Last year.
It was. And, and I believe you also know for us every year, Chris, that April is a really neat month.
June.
Oh, June.
And June last year, for the record, I know it's smirly, but it rained every day of June, almost every day of July. And the nicest one week of the summer was the first week that the kids went back to school. And so I will continue to beat this dead horse that I really think we should start after Labor Day. All of Europe starts on September 1st. And, you know, we'd be starting on the 3rd. It's not like it's the 7th, 8th, or 9th. And uh, the staff can still do their, uh, their two-day workshops and all those pieces. If they want to come in Monday, Tuesday, they can. And then the students come in on the 3rd.
And I know that, Chris. And we've had this conversation every year. Sometimes we've had this conversation to the point that we had to table the calendar for months at a time.
And we have two versions this year.
And we have two versions. So we can, so that does not become one of the calendars, Ryan. This is, you have no idea how, how many shots we talked about this calendar. But, but recognize, you see up in the right-hand corner, this is what the teachers want. This is, this is the administration's recommendation. This is their request for the start of their year. And they have a lot of rationale for why they want this soft start to begin because it tees up the school year in a very appropriate way. The kids are still going to get a long weekend to work this 30th. And, and I guess when it comes to a recommendation around what impacts their life directly, my tendency is to lean into their request rather than my perception as an individual about what I think.
Did we get any student input? Did the student council go on this?
Yes, go ahead, Johanna.
No, we had.
Must be present to win.
So, yeah, we had support staff actually weigh in on this and then we had.
What about the students?
We did not have students.
I can tell you from my child's perspective, from all of the things they talked about, that she talked about with the kids in school, their issue was graduation and these calendars have the same graduation date.
No, we got a.
So that's changed?
I, I would recommend on the RTA recommended one, that graduation's on the 7th.
Yeah, I think that's a typo.
Well, now a graduation should be on the 7th. Because we'll, I've just.
11th versus the 13th. Is that what it is?
7th versus the 14th.
14th.
Yeah, because that student, I think.
As long as we, as long as.
Are we sure? As long as, I'm, we're, we can, yeah, we, we have to make sure there's 170 days.
If you double check what the.
I'm sorry. Johanna had a question.
Yeah, you have to, they have to go for 170 days.
Yeah.
State law.
Our seniors have to go 170.
It's the earliest first step.
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. Johanna has a question.
Georgia, can you speak to, um, because I know this was hot topic last year, the Foster Tech schedule, the college course, advanced course schedule. So can you speak to the dissimilar days?
Yeah, so um, uh, we're not allowed to, you know, we, because we are sending school to our, our CTE program, we cannot have more than five dissimilar days. So in the RTA recommended calendar, there, there is actually three dissimilar days. In the after Labor Day start, there is five dissimilar days. So, um, do we know which days they are? Yeah.
And I also asked Georgia that exact same question, Johanna, about does, does this create any overlap? Because kids talked last year about the, you know, the college course overlap and whether or not. And they, you don't anticipate that there's any overlap. And if there was, you know which kids are, you know, you're, those kids are on your radar. So they're not going to fall through the cracks, cracks and be disor, you know, discouraged from taking a college class because they would run into a conflict of exams.
I see someone just make a motion.
Okay. How would you make a motion?
I'm not making a motion.
Tell them who's going to be the head.
Because I'll make the Labor Day one.
Someone would like to make a motion.
All right.
Okay, Bob, you go.
I make a motion that the school board accepts the RTA recommended calendar as presented.
Can I have a second? Can they? Any more discussion? All those in favor? You gotta check first.
Almost unanimous.
It's almost unanimous.
Not, not.
Well, because, yeah, so do we have enough? We have enough. Okay, so passes. Thank you.
Upon a complimentary procedure, you should ask for extension.
Oh, yes, yes. Those who abstain.
Of those who.
And those who vote against it.
Two Rangeley votes again.
Sorry, I didn't realize.
Deb voted for.
I took almost.
Deb vote? And Joan, Joan, did you vote?
Yep, they were both yes.
And you were both for the, before Labor Day start?
Amber was on there, but I.
Get your votes.
Okay.
Does Amber have a vote on?
Amber, do you have a vote? Can you hear us?
Is Amber on?
She's on, but I don't.
Okay.
No.
Ms. Georgia, can you get us the dates for graduation?
I, yeah, I will definitely double check that.
So can we, as amended then, because you amended that to the 7th. No, 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 no. I just recommended, but Georgia and I, we're going to keep to our constitution.
The vote's passed. It's been voted on and it's passed, so.
So the 14th is your graduation?
Well, we'll, we'll check on graduation. It's not indicated on the calendar. We'll let everybody know.
It is a case.
Oh, it is?
That's why I'm asking as amended.
So now we voted on something that.
It's already been voted on. We will, we will make sure everybody's notified what is graduation.
The motion was to vote as per.
Yes, so.
This is what's approved.
So now we've approved to do graduation no matter what on the 14th.
Well, if.
If you want to change that, this is the time to have that vote is now.
Okay.
Where's, where's? Can we take, can we take a roll?
I'm sure. It sounds to me like the uh, management has a little bit of work to do on this to determine what will work in terms of the graduation. There are minimum numbers of days involved in this and a couple of other things.
Right. Just need to make sure.
So this brings back a revised.
Cause Bob finished saying what he's saying.
We can go back to this if we need to dismodify that one aspect of the calendar. We have the ability to do that.
Right. And right now we voted on this calendar. So we'll, if we need to bring an amended calendar to the board meeting next month, we will do that.
Well, Georgia, can you please explain what the stipulations around graduation are for, for our seniors? What needs to be met?
Can you help me just read?
Yes.
Okay, so this is where we're, this is where we're stuck. Give me one, okay. Because a couple of years ago, we had graduation and we had six school days after graduation. So we made the seniors make up the debt, right? But I read the statute says, according to statute, SAUs may allow secondary students to graduate up to five days prior to the regularly scheduled end of school year. Okay? The regular scheduled school year. Then they define the regular scheduled end of school year is the anticipated last year's school established by the adoption of the calendar by the school board. I read this as, as long as our graduation date on this approved anticipated calendar is within five days, no matter how many snow days we have, we're still good. Right? How do you? That's how, that's, that's how I understood the law. The law always was graduation day and no more than five days went except five days past graduation date that was on the calendar. If there's three snow days, that doesn't affect you. I, I believe so. And the reason. That's how it's always been. And it makes sense because with little old Rangeley, it's easy to do this. But say you're, you're like Portland with a thousand graduating seniors and you have an extra snow day, are you really gonna? You're not going to bump it. Right. So that's, this is interpretation. So by that point, you guys will bring us back showing the 7th as your graduation.
Or not.
Or not.
We're going to get some more. Or you decide to keep it the first.
Yeah.
You decide and come back.
Thank you.
But this is all completely.
So right now, this is where we're at. We have voted on this calendar. If there is a conflict with graduation, it will come back to the board as an amended calendar. Yes, they have.
But I think people who are voting on this calendar with the understanding that graduation was going to happen on the 7th, not the 14th.
Honestly, I couldn't care less about my graduation if it was July 1st or the 7th. I would say whatever fits the teacher's calendar is better, the staff calendar better.
But what are the, so.
It doesn't change and they had the vote, so it was just.
Okay. Let's leave it at that. Danielle, we'll, we'll come back to the amended calendar. And I, what I guess I'm hearing is you want graduation sooner?
Well, I just think that like, we're, we're arguing over two workshop days, but the seniors also like, we're going to start earlier and they're still going to go to school until the 14th?
No, they have to do one 7th.
No, the last day of school.
Danielle, Danielle, the last day of school is June 11th. Okay, but.
Graduation is on the 14th.
Okay, so it doesn't matter. We already voted.
Next. Okay, hold me on. All right, let's go on to adoption. Uh, we need to vote for approval of the budget to go out for um, the community.
Make a motion, we approve the 2024, 2025 RS78 budget, 5,007,18,140 and the whopping 8 cents as proposed in the, in the final budget proposal dated March 12, 2024, to be distributed to the public in order to be able to vote it on, on the June 4th, 2024.
Excellent. Thank you. May I have a second to that motion? Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Moving right along. The adult education budget.
Make a motion that we raise.
Okay, Chris.
We raised $14,413.59 to the adult education budget.
May I have a second? Johanna, any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Okay, moving along.
Make a motion that we raise $20,000 for the school nutritional program.
May I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Moving along.
I make a motion that we have raised and authorized to expend $100,000 to be placed in our capital reserve account for unexpected and emergency maintenance repairs to regional school unit facilities and equipment.
May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Johanna, any questions or discussion? All those in, Bob?
I just wanted to, I, I, this was already fine item in the budget that we looked at previously.
It's a separate article that requires.
It has to be a separate article.
Understood.
All these we're reading are separate articles so that the lawyer can draft. But thank you, Bob.
Thank you. All those in favor? Chris?
Okay, uh, previously we voted on an open format. We've traditionally done that. All articles to be written in open format. Open format allows for budget articles to be amended up or down at the budget gearing. Gives the greatest flexibility to the, to the constituents that are there. Closed format only allows for budget out of articles to be either passed or, or amended down. Meaning you can change the amount lower, you cannot make it higher. So I propose and make a motion that we have our budget prepared in the open format.
Second, second? Any discussion or questions about that? Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
That's it for my stuff.
Kathy, I'm going to turn the last three items over to you because they are uh, policy.
Yes. Um, well, the first thing is the uh, BCBE, but um, we have to consider BCB as well. BCB, the conflict of interest, was the one that was tabled because it was recommended that we have a conflict of interest disclosure, which is BCB-E dash E. Uh, was um, kind enough to send us this and we amended it just a little, right? What words did we add to this? We have words to.
You guys swipe an employee on the back?
Oh, no, that was BCB. That was BCB.
Yeah, this is actually, so.
Climb out for one second. We never approved.
BCB.
BCB because we didn't have BCB-E as supplemental with us. So actually incorrect on the agenda. It's not consideration to approve policy BCB-E. It should be BCB.
And.
And BCCBE.
Was BCB a revision initially?
No, that's the one that we tabled, remember?
No, I don't, but you don't know, are we approving a new?
We tabled the policy. We didn't have the form at the time.
So as far as.
Johanna is right.
For Robert's rules, the easiest way to handle this is, is like to make a motion to bring back to the table BCB for consideration as.
But that was a revision, not a new policy. That's what I was trying to clarify.
Okay, so let me have a second on that motion, then we can talk about both of them. Can I have a second? All those in favor? Okay.
So now BCB is back on.
So BCB is back to be revised and then, uh, BCBE is to be adopted.
So we can vote on both of those ballots.
So, uh, this is a matter of clarification. The BCB is actually the policy itself. The BCBE is actually the instrument of disclosure.
That's right.
That would need to be executed in order to have a record of any potential of receipt conference.
And you actually have a co- a copy of this. And, and if you read this, really what this involves is board members, anybody in their immediate family, or anybody who's considered an employee. The limitation in the policy, according to conflict of interest, is they may not participate in a discussion that could impact increases in financial remuneration. And they must sign a disclosure, a disclosure form, which now part of with the dash E.
Yes.
So is, are there any other concerns or questions about that? So can I have a motion to adopt these two policies?
Policy and form.
Okay.
To revise policy BCB and adopt.
Right, BCB.
I make a motion to revise policy BCB and to adopt form BCB.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or discussions around that? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, Bob. Moving along.
Next one. I don't understand why this is here. Oh, the re- okay. Well, then this is again, we should combine the discussion.
It's redundant.
IJNDV, IJNDV E and IJ and, how did that happen? It's not the right.
I think there might be a typo there.
There's a typo.
Yeah.
B and R. It's a typo. It should be, the first one should be IJNDV dash R.
Yeah.
Not K?
Not K.
Not K, no K.
Not K. Not K. Thank you, Danielle. Not K.
Yeah, no K.
It's a typo. So, um, what we want to do.
Hold on Kathy.
Kathy, I didn't get that. What was the typo?
On, on ten ten, it's IJNDV dash R, not KB.
Okay.
So DB dash R.
We want to rescind. Correct.
Because it's redundant.
Yep, so move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion, questions or concerns?
It's covered under the other form.
Right. All those in favor? Okay.
And then I'm just gonna skip BCDH so we can finish with IJNDV E. So that is, uh, IJNDV, um, is being revised. This is all recommendation, by the way.
Yeah.
So that's been revised, just a changing of words, uh, to devices. And that also speaks to this keeping it broader so we don't have to bring it back to you every year.
Which I always love. Thank you, Deb.
Well, thanks Sean.
Yeah.
Yes.
I like, I like that so we don't have to keep.
And then, um.
Like mushrooms.
IJNDV E.
Yep. There's some added language there to make it, um, after we rescinded on.
Devices rather than computers.
Yeah, this is essentially R, but it's, um, yeah. It's essentially R, but we've added language and will, this is something to be, this is something to be signed.
Yep, sent home, initial.
Yes, that's right.
So there's one.
Read an initial to the policy. That's what they have to do.
There's one error I need to bring up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Where?
Under your cross-reference, you cross-reference IJNDV dash R, which we just rescinded.
Yeah.
So I would change that to E and then reference the new name of that form, which is, so I would say go forward with this as amended. Computer, Student Computer Lending and Usage Rules Contract would be in there in place of IJNDV dash R. It would be IJNDV dash E as a cross-reference.
Okay.
Okay, did you get that?
You get that rope?
So as, I propose we approve as amended IJNDV and IJNDV dash E.
E, right, dash E. Okay.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the last one I had to do was substitute teachers. And ed specialists.
Okay, so basically what we're trying to do here with this, uh, with this policy is make it so that the, the rates are fluid based on the Schedule A and the support staff contract um, at the zero, uh, at the bottom of the scale. So, uh, dependent upon, um, what classification, so if you're an ed tech, cook, secretary and you're coming in to sub, um, if you've got either years of experience, you know, um, actually, scratch that. It's not years of experience, it's only education.
Right.
Okay? Um, you would be at the zero step of the scale at the, at that hourly rate.
So what you're doing is you're genericizing this like we did the, the reimbursement rate for mileage. So it's quote at the state level, so we don't have to change it because it has a specific figure in it. We don't have to change it every year that that figure changes.
So they have to be certified teacher to get the two hundred bucks, otherwise they're on the zero scale.
This, this is reflective of the support staff contract, so.
So even if you have like a doctorate, but you don't have a teaching certificate, you're, you're not paid for.
You're still coming in.
Well, if you have a doctorate and you're coming in as an ed tech, you're gonna come in at, as an ed tech three. At the zero, at the bottom of the scale. You see what I'm saying? If you're right out of high school, you'll be an ed tech one at the bottom.
Not that I'm volunteering to come be an ed tech, just so we're clear. But I was just asking.
We have a position open, Chris.
The only one that's not, the only one that's not changing here is the certified teacher rate because we actually just increased that one recently. That probably will come into play a little bit later, but for right now, I think that's, that's a good rate.
And the only question I had, why are we, is it one eighty-two? Is that our contract date?
Yes, yeah.
Even though the students are here, one seventy-five? Okay.
One eighty-two for, um, for our teachers.
Yeah, they have, because they.
Two or more years of college, that's completed college, so basically.
Level two.
They don't have to have an associate's degree, they just have to complete two years of college.
It's, it's high school, two years of college, a degree.
All right.
So can I have a motion to that effect?
I know that we accept CCDA as revision. Right?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I had a, I had a different question.
Okay.
I'm really sorry because I know everybody wants to get out here on this.
No, no, that's okay.
But, um, we're gonna pay eighty percent of a single choice health insurance plan for long-term assignments that are sixty days or more. Why?
That's what we, that's what we've been doing.
So we've been doing.
Seems unusual.
Was in the previous contract and.
Okay.
The previous one before that.
So what happens when they?
We just ratified the contract.
So when they're here sixty days, they work that job, they leave, then they can be wiped over on our list? What happens? Does anyone opting for it? Ruckman, has anyone opting for it?
No.
That's why I'm wondering.
It's in the, it's in the contract. It's in the contract we just ratified.
It's in the contract that long-term support staff substitutes?
There's not, no, there's not any language in the contract around substitutes. Um, I think it is a way for us to get a long-term substitute. It's like a one step above what they would be getting if they were just coming in, being called in every day.
So that dynamic makes sense. Georgia needs to have a pretty good toolbox to work with.
I just don't see anybody doing it.
Whether it's done or not, we should be prepared in case it happens. As I like to say, chance favors the prepared mind. And in this particular case, every time we go through, uh, contract negotiations and we develop these articles and refine them, what happens is there are changes in the number of sick days, the number of personal days that all weave into the sick days. I should go on and on, but I won't. But, um, this will actually help management, uh, be able to fill in holes left by, uh, whomever is coming and going for whatever reason.
My own, if I could speak to this more. My only concern is, is that because of our other policies that we have, somebody comes in as a long-term substitute, they don't want to take the eighty percent. Are they then able to apply it to their, um, spouses if they're covered under their spouse's? No, we have a policy that we allow, if the support staff, if they have insurance, their spouse has another insurance, they will do it. So I'd like to have that clarified.
No, the support staff contract, we provide a hundred percent of the health insurance for the support staff individual who is employed in the district. We do not pay for their partners or their children.
You're not listening to my question, so let me explain it a little bit. It could be my fault when I'm explaining.
Roxanne, do you understand Chris's question?
So I'm, so I'm Chris Farmer, citizen. I come in to work sixty days here. My wife Jennifer Farmer has a gold star insurance thing. I, my eighty percent after, I'm gonna be here more than sixty days. My eighty percent of that policy is, let's just say, eight hundred dollars. I don't want to go onto our, the insurance at the school for two months because it doesn't make sense. It's deductible. I think it's a four-month stay. Right? Do I get to those after the sixty days or since I took a sixty-day gig? Do I from day one get that eight hundred dollars that I can then give to my spouse to offset the insurance? Because we do that with spouses in the support staff contract currently. So I just want to make sure that we are clear on what we're doing here.
Roxanne, can you?
She's not on her head, but I think I'm right, aren't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
And just from that, the whole sixty days, that policy can be affordable care act. So under the Affordable Care Act, you are required, if someone is working for you under, so which is how that sixty days comes about, that they are allowed to opt into the insurance with it. So that's how the long-term, like how this long-term substitute is able to get on the insurance if they choose.
But are we required per the contract that say on day sixty-one, we have to offer that?
Long-term search don't have a contract.
Well, no, I'm talking about our support staff contract, which is what drives this policy, correct? It, and I'm sorry I'm getting in the weeds here, but I really want to understand financially what the impact is with this policy, is that on day sixty-one, I can then walk in the office, say Roxanne, under the Affordable Care Act, I'm supposed to have this option. I don't want to take your crappy school insurance. I want to use my wife's gold plan insurance. Please write me a check for the eight hundred dollars that was there and, and so I can hand it to my wife as an option. Is that technically the scenario that we, if we approve this policy as it is, that's what we do?
There's no choice. It has, we have to do it under the Affordable Care Act, Chris. There's no choice.
But there is a policy we can, I thought under the Affordable Care Act though, that we can just offer our policy. We don't have to write them a check. We can just say, yeah, use your.
If you're going to change that, but then you have to be changing.
Oh, the CDAs.
Yeah, like how you offer everyone.
Jordan, I have a question.
Because we do that, even, even if it's a single health plan we're offering, if somebody has a spouse, we are going to reimburse them up to that, that single.
So once they get sixty-one days, then basically they fall under the support staff contract. We can't do something different for a long-term sub because it will impact the whole bargain agreement.
Let's get this in perspective. Roxanne, how many people currently would fall into that category that are part of the support staff?
How many people in the last five years?
No one.
How many in the past five years?
How many in the past five years?
I had, since I've been here, I have not had anyone that's taken a long-term sub that has taken.
But we've had several long-term subs.
Four have brought in where they would get.
Yeah, we've had several long-term subs.
But they haven't taken it there.
But they haven't taken it there.
This is specifically for support staff though.
Not. Not by Jennifer. It would be long-term sub.
It's all long-term subs.
So if you had a, a teacher that was out, if you had to hire a long-term sub for six hundred ninety bits, that potentially, that substitute teacher.
I'm sorry Roxanne, this, this particular clause only speaks to the support staff in this policy.
Right.
But per the Affordable Care Act, we're on the hook with everything.
Are you gonna rewrite the Affordable Care Act right now, Chris? Okay, well then we don't really have a choice. We don't, unless we uproot everything and reroot everything.
We have to, we have to revisit the.
I'm just saying.
We really have to revisit the.
I just wanted to understand if we could just say, you can either take our insurance, we don't have to write the check. We put a lot of checks for contracts.
Roxanne's answer by as no, we cannot, under the Affordable Care Act.
I had a right to access. Thousand bucks.
I'm not saying you don't, but it's.
It's never happened.
But there's no more discussion we have. It's probably because we'll be cool about it tomorrow. Just saying.
So, where are we? We have a, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of adopting the motion? All those opposed? All those abstentions? So, having said that, our next meeting is April the ninth.
And I'm pleased to see everybody.
Yes, we're all dead from the.